My name is Dan Larson. I am the Chair of the Wheat Ridge Planning Commission. And I'd like to thank you all for joining us this evening. Before we begin, here are a few notes about our meeting format. Tonight, we will have planning commissioners and staff attending in person, as well as members of the public. Based on current health guidance, we recommend commissioners and all those attending in person wear face masks during the meeting. We're also broadcasting this meeting for viewers on Channel 8 and WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. Members of the public who are not present and wish to make comments may participate virtually by joining through Zoom, either on a device or by calling in. The Zoom meeting information is provided on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When it is time for public comment, and there will be three public comment periods tonight, we will first call on those who wish to speak in person, followed by anyone attending the meeting online and speaking through our Zoom connection. If you are speaking tonight, please keep background noise to a minimum. If you do not plan to participate by speaking this evening, we recommend you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. We appreciate your participation in tonight's meeting. We hope to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue, and we appreciate your help with this process. I would now like to call to order the City of Wheat Ridge Planning Commission meeting for September 16th, 2021. May I get a roll call of members, please?
Ari Kretschever?
Here.
Jahis Simbay? Scott Ohm?
Here.
Christine Disney?
Here.
Melissa Antol?
Here.
Will Kearns?
Here.
Janet Leo?
Here.
Dan Larson?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. The next order, uh, the next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item is to approve the order of the agenda, and I'd like the, uh, our clerk to make note of the, uh, of the air on the agenda this evening for item two on the public hearing. Uh, it should be case number Z O A 21-03. Other than that, can we get a, a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
A call for a vote? There we go.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we will vote to approve the minute, the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on September 2nd, 2021?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Motion carries six to one with Ari Kretschever abstaining.
Thank you.
We will now open the general interest public forum segment of our agenda. This is the time for any person to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda.
If you plan to speak on one of our two public hearing agenda items, please wait until the hearing for that item. All speakers are asked to limit their speeches to three minutes. Speakers may not donate their time. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Is there anyone signed up to speak in the general interest forum?
I was late putting the sign up sheets out, so I apologize. No one has signed up yet. We do have, um, two members of the public in Zoom. So I can check that as well. Um, and I believe we have one person present who would like to speak.
Excuse me, can I have a point of order, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I have a point of order? Was, uh, Mr. Kearns here at the last meeting to, uh, vote on the minutes, or should he abstain as well?
He should abstain.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Kearns should be abstaining from the vote on the minutes.
Yeah, because I wasn't here.
Can we change that?
Can we have a revote, please?
Sure.
Revote. This is on the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion carries five to two with Kretschever and Kearns abstaining.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, for the public forum, um, if you would like to go ahead and invite anyone from the audience
who has not yet signed up but would want to speak, and then we can go to the Zoom and see if anybody would like to speak from there.
If there's anyone in the audience that would, that would like to speak? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address, please.
Vivian Boss, V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. What I would like to speak about right now, um, will, uh, make sense as you get to your agenda item, but Monday night, that city council meeting, they were approving or not a subdivision that was connected to an M U N. There was a lot of discussion. The subdivision wasn't very welcomed at all by the neighbors, and there was quite a bit of discussion by the city council members. Of course, all they were voting on was the actual subdivision, which is pretty much a rubber stamp if all the setbacks and requirements are met. So just for your information, the subdivision passed narrowly by a four, five to three. Three against the subdivision. What is going on here is when you, when you have an M U N, and then you put a subdivision in, and I'm speaking to the subdivision, then the only recourse that anybody has, city council or planning, is to vote yes or no on a subdivision. Pretty cut and dry, rubber stamp, it meets the requirements, off you go. What you don't get to hear and see is any of the design plans. That is all administrative. And so I would, wanted to bring you up to speed on what has already happened with different, um, individuals, citizens, and whatnot thinking about this, and I'll pull this all together when I speak on the agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Boss. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an, an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on an item that is not, uh, that is not an item on the agenda?
Um, we just have one person joining us. If anybody, um, is on the Zoom and would like to comment at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom format. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
And we'll, we'll just wait a couple of seconds here to see if anybody joins in and decides they would like to speak. Please speak up now. Hearing no one, I will close the public forum. Onto new business for the evening. Our first public hearing case tonight is case WZ 2105, an application filed by David Heller for approval of a zone change from Residential 2, known as R2, to a mixed-use neighborhood, M U N, for property located at 4535 Wadsworth Boulevard. I'd like to welcome members of the public to our hearing. It is important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our goal is always to create, as always, is to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. We appreciate your help in this process. Please respect the statements made by city, city staff, the applicant, and my fellow planning commissioners. I ask that you do not make comments for the audience or otherwise disrupt the proceedings. We, we start all public hearings with the presentation from staff and the applicant. After the presentations, commissioners will ask questions of the staff and applicant, and then we will invite the public for their comments during the citizen forum. I will now turn it over to Lauren for the staff presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Zareen Tezneem, a planner in our division who will be making this presentation.
The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, our planning commission has jurisdiction to hear this. The subject property is outlined here in red in the middle of the screen. The property is located on the west side of Wadsworth Boulevard, between 45th Avenue and 45th Place. Wadsworth Boulevard is one of Wheat Ridge's main north-south arterials, with the Wadsworth Road Improvement Project slated to start construction in fall 2021. The property is approximately an acre in size and contains a church built in 1952. The property is currently zoned Residential 2, R2. Many church properties in the city are zoned residentially. Most other properties along Wadsworth Boulevard in this area are in commercial or mixed-use zone districts, and primarily contain commercial uses. To the immediate west is a multi-family residential development on Yukon Court, zoned Residential 3, R3. Further to the east and west are lower-density residential uses, zoned R2. This is a view of the subject property from the southeast corner, which shows the front portion of the existing church, and the access point off Wadsworth Boulevard, and the existing signs on the property. This is a view of the property from the southwest corner, which shows the back portion of the existing church and the extent of the front of the lot. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning designations, as well as the character of the Wadsworth Boulevard. The current R2 zoning is reflective of the longstanding church use. The R2 zoning dates back to the city's original 1972 zoning map. The R2 district allows only single-family houses, duplexes, churches, and schools. Aside from home occupations, commercial uses are prohibited. The previous church congregation diminished in size, and they sold the property. So the zone change will also allow a wider range of potential land uses in the future. The M U N zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two. The M U N zone district is complementary to the context of the corridor and the surrounding zoning and land uses. This table summarizes the proposed zoning's development standards, most of which would apply if the property redeveloped in the future. In terms of permitted uses, M U N allows commercial uses, whereas the R2 zone district does not. In terms of residential uses, M U N is more flexible, because the R2 only allows single-family homes and duplexes. The M U N zone district allows up to 21 dwelling units per acre. Any building containing a residential use in M U N is limited to 35 feet in height, same as any regular residential zone district. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on July 28th, 2021, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting due to COVID-19 regulations. Three people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the public hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. No comments were received. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed M U N zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comprehensive plan. The plan for this area includes, indicates Wadsworth Boulevard as a primary commercial corridor. This encourages a broad mix of activities. The plan also specifically notes the importance of improving outdated and underutilized properties on Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change request enables further investment in the property, and aligns with the city's goal for a mix of uses on this corridor. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of their request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns on Wadsworth, the M U N zone district is more appropriate than R2 in terms of allowed uses and intensity. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to a mixed-use neighborhood is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for Wadsworth Boulevard. Specifically, the comprehensive plan notes the importance of improving the appearance and function of the corridor, and working to redevelop outdated and underutilized properties. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and by aligning the zoning with the city's mixed-use goals for this corridor. Planning commission will recommend a decision to the city council, who will also review the zone change request. If city council approves their request, then the zone change is approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you. The applicant chose not to do a presentation, but is here tonight to take any questions.
The next we will vote to approve the minute, the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting on September 2nd, 2021?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Motion carries six to one with Ari Kretschever abstaining.
Thank you. We will now open the general interest public forum segment of our agenda. This is the time for any person to speak on a subject that is not on tonight's agenda. If you plan to speak on one of our two public hearing agenda items, please wait until the hearing for that item. All speakers are asked to limit their speeches to three minutes. Speakers may not donate their time. If you plan to speak, please give us your name, spell your last name, and share your address. Is there anyone signed up to speak in the general interest forum?
I was late putting the sign up sheets out, so I apologize. No one has signed up yet. We do have, um, two members of the public in Zoom. So I can check that as well. Um, and I believe we have one person present who would like to speak.
Excuse me, can I have a point of order, please?
I'm sorry?
Can I have a point of order? Was, uh, Mr. Kearns here at the last meeting to, uh, vote on the minutes, or should he abstain as well?
He should abstain.
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Kearns should be abstaining from the vote on the minutes.
Yeah, because I wasn't here.
Can we change that?
Can we have a revote, please?
Sure.
Revote. This is on the minutes from the last meeting.
Motion carries five to two with Kretschever and Kearns abstaining.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for the public forum, um, if you would like to go ahead and invite anyone from the audience who has not yet signed up but would want to speak, and then we can go to the Zoom and see if anybody would like to speak from there.
If there's anyone in the audience that would, that would like to speak? Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address, please.
Vivian Boss, V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. What I would like to speak about right now, um, will, uh, make sense as you get to your agenda item, but Monday night, that city council meeting, they were approving or not a subdivision that was connected to an M U N. There was a lot of discussion. The subdivision wasn't very welcomed at all by the neighbors, and there was quite a bit of discussion by the city council members. Of course, all they were voting on was the actual subdivision, which is pretty much a rubber stamp if all the setbacks and requirements are met. So just for your information, the subdivision passed narrowly by a four, five to three. Three against the subdivision. What is going on here is when you, when you have an M U N, and then you put a subdivision in, and I'm speaking to the subdivision, then the only recourse that anybody has, city council or planning, is to vote yes or no on a subdivision. Pretty cut and dry, rubber stamp, it meets the requirements, off you go. What you don't get to hear and see is any of the design plans. That is all administrative. And so I would, wanted to bring you up to speed on what has already happened with different, um, individuals, citizens, and whatnot thinking about this, and I'll pull this all together when I speak on the agenda item. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Boss. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on an, an item that's not on the agenda tonight? Is there anyone online that would like to speak on an item that is not, uh, that is not an item on the agenda?
Um, we just have one person joining us. If anybody, um, is on the Zoom and would like to comment at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom format. I'm not seeing any hands raised.
And we'll, we'll just wait a couple of seconds here to see if anybody joins in and decides they would like to speak. Please speak up now. Hearing no one, I will close the public forum. Onto new business for the evening. Our first public hearing case tonight is case WZ 2105, an application filed by David Heller for approval of a zone change from Residential 2, known as R2, to a mixed-use neighborhood, M U N, for property located at 4535 Wadsworth Boulevard. I'd like to welcome members of the public to our hearing. It is important that this hearing be conducted in a dignified and civil manner. Our goal is always to create, as always, is to create a friendly and respectful atmosphere for public dialogue. We appreciate your help in this process. Please respect the statements made by city, city staff, the applicant, and my fellow planning commissioners. I ask that you do not make comments for the audience or otherwise disrupt the proceedings. We, we start all public hearings with the presentation from staff and the applicant. After the presentations, commissioners will ask questions of the staff and applicant, and then we will invite the public for their comments during the citizen forum. I will now turn it over to Lauren for the staff presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Zareen Tezneem, a planner in our division who will be making this presentation.
Hello, my name is Zareen Tezneem, and I am a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge's Community Development Department. I am presenting case number WZ 2105, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Residential 2, R2, to a mixed-use neighborhood, M U N, at 4535 Wadsworth Boulevard. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge. All appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, our planning commission has jurisdiction to hear this. The subject property is outlined here in red in the middle of the screen. The property is located on the west side of Wadsworth Boulevard, between 45th Avenue and 45th Place. Wadsworth Boulevard is one of Wheat Ridge's main north-south arterials, with the Wadsworth Road Improvement Project slated to start construction in fall 2021. The property is approximately an acre in size and contains a church built in 1952. The property is currently zoned Residential 2, R2. Many church properties in the city are zoned residentially. Most other properties along Wadsworth Boulevard in this area are in commercial or mixed-use zone districts, and primarily contain commercial uses. To the immediate west is a multi-family residential development on Yukon Court, zoned Residential 3, R3. Further to the east and west are lower-density residential uses, zoned R2. This is a view of the subject property from the southeast corner, which shows the front portion of the existing church, and the access point off Wadsworth Boulevard, and the existing signs on the property. This is a view of the property from the southwest corner, which shows the back portion of the existing church, and the extent of the front of the lot. The zone change will result in a zoning that matches surrounding zoning designations, as well as the character of the Wadsworth Boulevard. The current R2 zoning is reflective of the longstanding church use. The R2 zoning dates back to the city's original 1972 zoning map. The R2 district allows only single-family houses, duplexes, churches, and schools. Aside from home occupations, commercial uses are prohibited. The previous church congregation diminished in size, and they sold the property. So the zone change will also allow a wider range of potential land uses in the future. The M U N zoning allows residential uses, commercial uses, or a mix of the two. The M U N zone district is complementary to the context of the corridor and the surrounding zoning and land uses. This table summarizes the proposed zoning's development standards, most of which would apply if the property redeveloped in the future. In terms of permitted uses, M U N allows commercial uses, whereas the R2 zone district does not. In terms of residential uses, M U N is more flexible, because the R2 only allows single-family homes and duplexes. The M U N zone district allows up to 21 dwelling units per acre. Any building containing a residential use in M U N is limited to 35 feet in height, same as any regular residential zone district. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on July 28th, 2021, in a virtual Zoom meeting setting due to COVID-19 regulations. Three people attended the meeting, and the notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from outside agencies. Before the public hearing, the property was posted for 15 days, and letters were sent to property owners within a 600-foot radius. No comments were received. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that the proposed M U N zoning is consistent with the policies and goals in the city's comprehensive plan. The plan for this area includes, indicates Wadsworth Boulevard as a primary commercial corridor. This encourages a broad mix of activities. The plan also specifically notes the importance of improving outdated and underutilized properties on Wadsworth Boulevard. The zone change request enables further investment in the property, and aligns with the city's goal for a mix of uses on this corridor. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of their request for the following reasons. Based on the character and land use patterns on Wadsworth, the M U N zone district is more appropriate than R2 in terms of allowed uses and intensity. For that reason, the zone change should not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. Staff finds a zone change to a mixed-use neighborhood is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, specifically the vision for Wadsworth Boulevard. Specifically, the comprehensive plan notes the importance of improving the appearance and function of the corridor, and working to redevelop outdated and underutilized properties. This zone change request supports the comprehensive plan by enabling investment in the property and by aligning the zoning with the city's mixed-use goals for this corridor. Planning commission will recommend a decision to the city council, who will also review the zone change request. If city council approves their request, then the zone change is approved. This concludes my presentation. Thank you. The applicant chose not to do a presentation, but is here tonight to take any questions.
Does the fact that it's unplanted have any effect on how it is assessed by the county?
We wouldn't know that information.
No, it doesn't. The subdivision status doesn't affect the tax assessment. Is that what you're asking? No. It doesn't, it doesn't really have an implication on the zoning either. It's just sort of our customary, it's a part of X subdivision, or it's unplatted. It basically means that the property was developed a long time ago. Most of our unplatted properties tend to have been developed before the city was incorporated or in our early days.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for staff or applicant? Mr. Kritschreiber.
Thank you. Yeah, just a few follow-up questions. One from Mr. Heller. I guess I'm curious about, so I haven't been on the planning commission for that long, but I've seen a number of requests for zoning changes, and they've always come along with sort of a, here's what we are intending to, here's why we're asking for this zone change, because we want to use the land for this purpose that we can't do under the current zoning plan. So can you explain a little more about why we're asking for this change now? If we're talking seven to 10 years before something as different is done with the property?
I mean, it's a great question. I don't, I don't think there's, I think the reason being is that as we purchased and acquired the property with the intent of participating in the future development of what's happening on Wadsworth Boulevard and the redevelopment of that street. And with that in mind, it didn't seem appropriate or reasonable to delay the request.
That's right. Thank you. And then sort of my other question, just generally about this zone, about mixed-use neighborhood in general. I'm wondering if staff can give any examples of, I'm just having a hard time
Yeah.
imagining what type of development we might be talking about.
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about sort of the speculative zone change option just philosophically and why we have that. Because we didn't have it in the code more than 10 years ago. Prior to the existence of any mixed-use districts, the only zone change option was to go to a planned development. And that meant you had to know what you were doing. You were paying an engineer, you were paying an architect. You were coming with full plans, super expensive, high, high level risk. And we weren't seeing a lot of investment because of that, right? So folks were going to other communities where they could sort of dip the toe into the first round of entitlement. And a lot of times, if you don't have the zoning in place, you can't find a tenant because they're not going to wait six to 12 months for zone change to occur. So part of the reason, just philosophically, why we created the mixed-use zone districts in the code in 2010 was to have another tool that allowed development to sort of capitalize on momentum or be more responsive to the market. The mixed-use districts have very, very strict and prescriptive rules for development, which is why the trade-off was to allow the site plans to occur to staff level. There's a tiny, tiny, just 10% variance allowed before it goes to a public hearing. There's not a lot of relief that is offered. So if somebody's not willing to abide by those form-based codes, it's not a good option for them. On a corridor like Wadsworth, we actually rezoned, it's just off the zoning map page, but we sort of speculatively rezoned Wadsworth as a city to that mixed-use commercial district to acknowledge the fact that maybe the zoning was an impediment to redevelopment of some of the vacant properties. We did the same thing on 38th Avenue. So just from a land use tool, we created this district knowing that there are strict standards in place. We called it a form-based code because we care a little bit more about what the buildings look like than what the use is. And we allow folks to rezone it speculatively. You're right, you haven't seen a case like this in quite some time. But we allow it to happen so that there is that flexibility, and the market can be more responsive. Prior to our applicant purchasing the property, we did entertain a variety of potential requests. So there was a brewery that wanted to repurpose it. But the zone change component can be a big impediment to reinvestment, depending on sort of who we're dealing with. If we're dealing with a smaller tenant, that's just something that they're not willing to tackle. So we do, we do entertain these, we do see these. You probably will see more in the near future, based on the pipeline that we know is coming. And that is kind of the intent, to allow folks to take sort of incremental risk, essentially, as they're exploring the options for the property. And we look at these with more scrutiny, because, you know, zoning lasts a long time. And that sort of unknown can be, can create some fear, right? So we do encourage you, even when somebody knows what they want to do, when they're rezoning to mixed-use, we encourage you to think about the whole range of possible options that could come here. We very specifically didn't recommend mixed-use commercial because we do think it's a little too intensive as you get further north on Wadsworth and for a property of this size. But at a staff level, we certainly feel comfortable with the range of potential options that could occur on this parcel under MUN.
And so just for, sort of by way of example, the two MUN properties that we see just at the very top, what are those? I'm trying to picture in my head what's there, and I can't.
Sure. The north, the one that's just cut off at the top on the same west side of the street is actually that sort of dilapidated mid-century modern home. That was rezoned because the owners at the time had hoped to convert that to an event center. They were the owners of the MOD Mood. That didn't come to fruition, but residential is allowed, so it's continued to be used, I believe, as a rental property for now. Property across the street on the west, east side of Wadsworth was rezoned several years ago now. That has a single-family home. I think that property went on the market sort of in anticipation of the Wadsworth widening. And the intent had been to potentially redevelop for townhomes or live-work. And nothing has changed there. So the zoning changed, but there's been no change on the ground.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Kritschreiber. Commissioner Antol?
Kind of random question, because I saw this in the packet that they had already acquired the right-of-way they needed for the corridor. I'm just kind of curious, since we started talking at properties further down the corridor, how much right-of-way did you need to acquire for the corridor? I mean, just curious about what is developable lots look like in the future?
Sure. So we've completed all the property acquisitions along the entirety of Wadsworth. The width varies a little bit. In this particular area, it's a slightly narrower width than the rest of the corridor because it's immediately across from the church that was deemed to be potentially historic. I'm not going to remember the exact dimension. I don't know if you do.
I mean, I can tell you just for reference point, that this property is listed incorrectly in public record. I think it's listed as like a 1.14 acre lot, and it's really closer to 1.03. And it's going to go down to with the, and this was sold to the church. The church brokered this deal before I acquired the land, but it's moving from something in the range of like 1.04 to 1.89. Was a large sum of it.
Yeah, I thought, I want to say it was maybe like, I think I said that incorrectly. Because we couldn't take land from the church across the street, the segment is much further shifted west. So I want to say it might have been even 20 feet. Doesn't touch the building, but it took the parking along the front of that building.
No, that's good to know, because I think the challenge for anyone that wants to redevelop in the future, they have to have a lot size of a certain significance to make it marketable and redevelopable. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Antol? Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Kearns?
I have two questions. First, is this church, you mentioned that the church has been around since before the city was around, or at least the property has. Does the church carry any sort of historic designation, structure? Looks like the front has some architecture to it. The rear of the church looks more modern, more recent?
It's not on any register, and it was not flagged as a potentially historic structure when we had to go through the federal process for the Wadsworth project, just the church across the street on the east side.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, can you talk to me a little bit about, how many, so for the max building height, how many floors are we talking about in the 35-foot building? How many floors are we talking about for a 50-foot building? About?
So for 35 feet, that's usually about three stories or so. For 50 feet, probably about four-ish stories.
50 feet usually ends up in a commercial standpoint being the same because we, usually a commercial story is closer to 12 feet in height. So, but there's more variety of building form and sort of that commercial limitation. But we don't express this in terms of stories like we do in some of our other mixed-use districts because those are sort of hard caps, but typically three.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Kearns, any other questions for the applicant?
That's it? I don't have any?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We appreciate your input this evening. We will now open the public forum on this case. This is case WZ 21-05. Once again, this is an application filed by David Heller for approval of a zone change from residential 2 to mixed-use neighborhood for a property located at 4535 Wadsworth Boulevard. We ask that you, anybody that's commenting, we ask you to limit your comments to this case. Typically administer an oath for any participant in a public hearing, staff, applicants in the public. In this hybrid meeting format, we're administering that oath in a different way. If you comment during a public hearing tonight by choosing to testify, you are agreeing that the testimony you give will be the truth as you know it. Are there any speakers in person that would like to speak this evening?
No one has signed up.
Please step up. State your name, spell your last name, and provide your address, please.
Vivian Voss, V as in Victor, O S as in Sam, 6920 West 47th Place. I'm a little bit against giving the farm away without any farm being built. One thing that an MUN allows, as we found out at 38th and Eaton, is subdivision. And on this property, they could build 21 units, minimum to maximum. And I understand that as you appeal to investors that you might need a different zone change than the R2 that is there. But if you do an MUN change, and down the road, there is a subdivision request, remember, that's all you get to vote on. You do not get to vote on the development of that property. So I would caution that seven years from now, different planning, but still the citizens that live here have to deal with 21 possible units on that property. Or it could be something else, but, you know, who knows what at this point? I would just say that if, as the owner indicated, he was hanging on to it for seven years, that that's when you come to zoning and make any kind of changes that you want based on a specific plan. And the citizens around the MUN on 38th and Eaton were highly vocal about not having the subdivision as it was presented. Four buildings, I believe, with 21 units did not fit the property. They felt that did not fit the neighborhood, they felt. Yes, Wadsworth is a little more commercial-oriented, and possibly it's shoved in 21 units for residency. But I don't see how the in-and-out on Wadsworth would make sense. And I did see the church, and it is rather historic-looking in its material build. And if there's got a 5,000-square-foot gym, I would hope that somebody in the city could make use of a 5,000-square-foot gym, whether it's for some kind of a large open business or an actual gym use. Maybe some feeding of the neighborhood and make it more open to the citizens as a citywide event. I think that's all. So caution you on the MUN at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Voss. Are there any other speakers lined up to, or wishing to speak this evening in person?
We still have a couple people on the Zoom, but nobody with their hand raised. So maybe give folks a moment. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom platform at the bottom of your screen. Not seeing any hands on here.
We will hold the public forum open for another, oh, let's say, 15 seconds to give anybody that's either online or in person an opportunity to speak. If there is no, if there is no one else who wishes to speak, I will close the public forum on this item. We will now pull our commissioners for any additional questions or comments on the item tonight. We'll start to my right, Commissioner Kearns.
No comments.
Commissioner Leo?
Nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Disney?
I am a little nervous that we don't know what's going to go there. I'm not concerned that it's going to be housing because, one, the lot is going down to a smaller size. And with parking, 21 units won't fit, so I'm not too concerned. Plus, to the west of this church is a big, clunky apartment building. So that part of town already has some density in terms of housing. And it's also going to be on the Wadsworth corridor. And the size of the lot, to me, doesn't make it very attractive for housing. And I suspect that this land will change hands before it's developed. But I think it makes sense at this point in time to change the zoning to be more appropriate for development on this corridor. That's all.
Commissioner Ohm?
Yeah, I have two quick questions. One, is there going to be a median, a new median for Wadsworth?
I'm sorry, what did you?
Is there going to be a, like a median?
Oh, a median. Yes, much of Wadsworth will have a median.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, and then just to clarify that process again, if somebody, if somebody showed up, let's just say on Wadsworth, and they have an existing structure, and you, would that process be, you would ask them, what are you going to do with it? Would that be the question you would ask? And then if they replied and said, I don't know, would the next step be, okay, we're going to send this to planning commission? Is that generally?
I'm sorry. If somebody wanted to reuse this structure after it's rezoned MUN?
No, 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 no. Somebody, just another, could be across the street. Somebody comes into your office and they say, I want to rezone to mixed-use neighborhood.
Oh, sure.
I have this property, I have an existing structure. And I would assume you'd probably ask them, what are you going to do with this? And their response is, I don't know.
Yep.
Doesn't matter if Wadsworth is going in or not, but is, would you then say you're, you know, we're going to greenlight you and recommend approval to go before the planning commission? Is that?
So that's a good question. We get zone change questions, I would say, on a daily basis at this point. And 95% of them, we are telling people, no. If, like, for example, the neighboring property to the north, which is still zoned residential and located on Wadsworth, if they contacted us and said, we're interested in expanding the permitted uses, what could we do? The first step is a pre-application meeting. So anybody that you've seen has gone through that process. It's required before you go through any application, change of use, or redevelopment. That's a meeting between our planning staff, sometimes our engineers, and the applicant, just to vet sort of what do they want to do and why? And what the applicable process would be. That's when we'd have the conversation of, here's the range of zone change options, and here's what we recommend and why. The next step in a potential zone change is a required neighborhood meeting, which includes invitations to all owners and occupants within 600 feet. So if, if, for example, the neighboring property to the north was to request an MUN, that could very well be something that would end up before you. But every zone change request is very much a sort of case-by-case situation, depending on the surrounding context and what they want to do and why.
So was the criteria, I guess, that it's an existing structure? Like a, in good shape, that was maybe a determining factor of why?
It doesn't necessarily have to have a structure on it. It just, we look at like the context of where it is, what are our existing plans, comprehensive plans saying? Because as you look in your staff report, that's one of the things we, you know, analyze against. What are the plans saying? What is the vision for this area moving forward? Is what you're proposing fit in with those visions? So it doesn't have to have a structure on it. It's really, you know, what's the existing land use patterns? What's the existing zoning? What are the comprehensive plans saying?
And are they okay to abide by the very strict sort of form-based codes and the use chart? Sometimes we get a really creative use that doesn't even, that wouldn't work in mixed-use, even if they had existing structures. So each request is really a sort of unique... So each request is really a sort of unique, sort of has to stand on its own merits, given the fact pattern.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rome, Commissioner Antol?
No, just a comment that I think it is important to support reinvestment along the Wadsworth corridor. I don't know about you guys, but every time I drive down there, I'm like, "Wow, isn't there a higher and better use for this area?" You know, some places that are basically just land- making, and I think if we want to see reinvestment, we have to allow things like this to happen, even if it has a temporary use over the next five years. The only way that someone is going to be able to reinvest this is if you take care of the entitlement process and you do it with a zoning that actually supports a new use that will really compensate in the market. So I'm going to be voting for approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Antol, Commissioner Krichyver?
Thank you. Just brief comments. I think I'm probably going to mirror a lot of what Commissioner Disney said, which, you know, I think if we were looking at a property that was not, didn't have the frontage on Wadsworth Boulevard, I might feel differently about it. But at the end of the day, there's no logical use of this property under the current zoning, any meaningful development of it. And so I think it makes a lot of sense, and we'll look down the road at, you know, what the proposed development is. But I agree.
Thank you, Commissioner Krichyver. I did have a quick question, if you guys could, and I can't find it in here right now, but during, I believe, the neighborhood meeting, as you're describing the property and describing what mixed-use neighborhood zoning means, there was a comment about what you cannot do with mixed-use zoning. I believe one of them was for automotive uses. Are there other things you cannot do under that zone?
Yeah, so higher-level, intense commercial uses, so, oh, I'm blanking right now, sorry. I don't have the use chart in front of me.
There is a limit, like the size, to the square footage of any retail use, for example. I'm pulling up the use chart. A lot of auto-oriented uses are not permitted or conditional permits because the intent is that it doesn't have that sort of intensity. Pulling it up now. Okay, so not permitted in comparison to some of the other mixed-use districts. Hospital, not permitted. Utilities, not permitted. Let's get to the commercial ones. Car wash, not permitted. Auto repair, not permitted. Any eating establishment with a drive-through is a conditional use. More industrial uses, not permitted, sort of light industrial. Even brewing without a taproom is not permitted. Vehicle sales lot, car sales, not permitted. Outdoor storage, not permitted. Pond broker, not permitted. Retail sales over 60,000 square feet, a larger format, not permitted. Marijuana uses are not permitted. There's a variety of other uses that are in sort of our standard commercial districts that don't align in the mixed use. The intent here was to really have things that are neighborhood-serving, even though it's on Wadsworth, fewer nuisances than maybe some of our other land uses.
And the regulations for it as well, because it has that 0 to 12 feet, built-to requirement, it really forces the building to be more pushed up to the sidewalk as opposed to MUC, which has a 0 to 12, and it can be a little more setback. So when you think about it in that way, you know, you're looking for something that's a little more like you're walking off the sidewalk into the building, it's a little more pedestrian-friendly in that sense. And there's only certain types of uses that can really cater to that as opposed to a little more commercial uses that want to be a little more setback from the street.
Okay, appreciate that. And that does help, I think, get a better understanding of what a zoning change like that allows and does not allow. And the other question I had, in the neighborhood meeting, it was described as a possible long-term goal, ground floor retail with apartments above, which seems reasonable and also, given the size of the lot, it just seems like a sort of reasonable and almost likely approach. The comment I would have for the applicant is that in the neighborhood meeting, it was mentioned that the building and the site is well-maintained, and I would urge the landowner to keep up with the maintenance, especially, I know it'll be difficult while the reconstruction of Wadsworth is going on, but I think that it does speak well for the community if properties such as this, very visible properties, are maintained and not become an eyesore. That's all I have. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Okay, we've closed the public. Now we're about ready to ask for a motion. Is there a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of case number WZ-21-05, request for approval of zone change from Residential Two to Mixed-Use Neighborhood for property located at 4535 Wadsworth Boulevard for the following reasons. Number one, the proposed zone change will promote the public health, safety, or welfare of the community, and does not result in adverse effect on the surrounding area. Number two, utility infrastructure adequately services the property. Number three, the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objectives of the city's comprehensive plan and consistent with the character of Wadsworth Boulevard. Number four, the zone change will provide additional opportunity for reinvestment in the area. Number five, the criteria used to evaluate its zone change supports the request.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, other issues with this? Okay, then we will call for a vote. Mr. Eaton, ready?
Ready.
Vote on the item. Thank you.
Motion carries, 7 to 0.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our second public hearing for tonight. This is case number ZOA 21-03. This is an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning letter of notice to property owners and to occupants for land use applications. First, we will hear a report by staff, followed by questions and comments from the commission, and then our public forum. Right?
Yes.
Well, I know we flipped it around last time and...
We can do it either way. We can do my presentation, and then public comment, and then questions.
Okay, so we will have the presentation from staff, and then questions and comments, and then the public forum. So I'll turn it over to Lauren.
Thank you. So tenant notice is a topic that we haven't talked about recently as the commission, but it has been sort of on our radar over the last couple of years. So as a reminder, in terms of some of the community engagement that we've worked from a code standpoint and a process standpoint, we adopted Wheat Ridge Speaks almost two years ago, 2000, end of 2019. And then last year, in 2020, we did a code amendment that expanded the letter notice for public hearings, so we expanded it from 300 feet to 600 feet. And at the same time, we increased the number of posting signs that were required on the property. And I don't expect you to remember this, but at that time, we had said there may be more, you know, expansions to how we keep people informed or more formally notice them for things like public hearings. We were talking really a lot about public hearings last year. This year, in 2021, City Council updated their strategic plan, and that included priority related to community engagement and education. And in May, several staff, not just from our division, but from across the city, we worked with council to present a work plan related to that community engagement goal. And this code amendment essentially stems from that discussion in May. So council very pointedly requested that we proceed with a code amendment that ensures that renters in Wheat Ridge are privy to the same letter notice as owners, particularly as it relates to land use applications. So in the staff report, I provided you all with a lot of the same background information that informed that policy discussion with council. We thought that was important, that you see our rationale. I'll summarize that just briefly here. So when this topic first came up, we really sort of pored over the code for every use of the word owner or resident or address, and just tried to identify all the touchpoints that we have. And we classified those into three different buckets. So the development rate, right, who can be the applicant or authorized, like a zone change, for example. An objection rate, which comes up in a couple of different processes, or like a legal protest to a zone change. And then just simply the right to information, and it's that third bucket that we're focusing on. We're not adding new letter notice into any process. We're just making sure that where letter notice is required in the code, in the zoning code, we are ensuring that both the owners and the occupants receive that notice. So historically, just so you know, in Wheat Ridge and really sort of across the country and the Denver metro area, letter notice has traditionally gone only to the property owner, and that's starting to change, we think, for a few different reasons. You saw on the table, it's on page two and three of your staff report, that it's kind of half and half, right, in terms of communities that are expanding notice beyond just owners. And we think that shift is changing, in part related to the availability of data, which is different now than it was even 10 or 20 years ago, in part because of the mapping technology that is more widespread and sort of makes these mailings and the procedures of mailings easier. And then just philosophically, certainly that expansion of notices is a reflection of our era of valuing transparency and information and equity, increasingly important values in the city and sort of at large. And we think this change is very much aligned with the city's comprehensive plan and council's goals. You may know that we have an active race and equity task force right now that was created within the last year, certainly a recommendation that would likely be coming from them. We've notified them of sort of our current procedure. So from a practical standpoint, I think we outlined in the memo, some of the changes that we'll make, we'll periodically purchase the data. The address units for an occupant, commercial or residential, is not a matter of public record. So if you've ever gone to the county assessor's page, they show the property and the owner's mailing address, but we'll buy, it's about $2,000 a year. It's not a lot. Our volume and cost of mailings will go up, so you may end up seeing sort of more public comment, and that's great. It's a reflection of the right people needing to know. And we provided a map that just shows sort of the distribution, the concentration, really, of the multi-tenant buildings that we have in Wheat Ridge. We don't have a good way to visualize that for commercial properties. The one you have is for residential. And the visual is still a little deceiving. Multi-tenant properties actually make up a third of our housing stock, so just when you look at, like, the number of dwelling units in Wheat Ridge, a third of them are in those colored areas on that map. And then just a last notation. If you've been following this policy discussion up to now, we've been saying tenant notice, and we landed on the term occupant really intentionally. Tenant tends to suggest that there's a leasehold interest, and now if I'm letting my sister live in a property I own without a lease, that, you know, we want to include her in the letter notice, right? So we chose occupant because resident is sort of excludes the commercial. Occupant's tenant suggests there's a leasehold. Address is, you know, we're trying to reach people. So that's where we landed. So there are a few cleanups in the ordinance so that we have consistency where we're maybe using a different term. We've updated that. So in short, again, this amendment is really just to make sure that where we have an existing mailing, whether it's for a public hearing, a public comment, or some other mailing related to a pending land use case, it's going to owners and occupants within that mailing radius. That's all I have for tonight. Happy to answer questions. We, let's see, we still have two people on the Zoom and one person in attendance. If you want to maybe do comment first, that's fine.
We are happy to open public comment. First, if anybody in the audience would like to speak on this topic?
No.
So let's go to our commissioners. We'll start to my right. We'll start with Commissioner Kearns.
No. So within that circle, the neighborhood meeting goes to owners and occupants, but every other mailing just goes to the property owner. So we're not changing the circle. We're just making sure that all the people in that circle, whether they live there or own property there, or have their business there, they get the letter. Yeah, yeah. So current process is if you're an out of, you know, if you own property but you don't live there, you get the letter at your mailing address, but your tenant doesn't get a letter, even though they might be next door to a really big change. They may see the sign, so we have multiple ways of noticing people, but we wanted to ensure that the letter goes to all the addresses, owners and occupants, within the existing circle. Yeah, that's a good question. So PO boxes are not, that data's not available, and it's not able, you know, that would show up very likely when we, if the post office is within a circle, we'd probably get all those PO boxes because that's how the data would work in terms of obtaining it, which is a little interesting. We haven't thought about that until this point. But it will go to all the physical addresses. So for example, when we have an apartment building, there is one address for the property, and that's like where the property owner gets their tax bill, but we don't have in public record every individual unit number. We have a lot more apartments than we used to have. Townhomes is different. Townhomes are all individual platted lots, right? So we will now have access through paying for all those individual unit numbers. So instead of a letter getting maybe tacked on in a best-case scenario to the, like, community notice board, it's showing up in all the mailboxes in that apartment building. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Kearns. Commissioner Leo?
Great.
Commissioner Disney?
No questions.
Commissioner Rome?
I have a couple of questions. One, is there still, is there anyone online that was going to comment?
No hands are raised for anybody online.
But the public comment is still open. You haven't closed it yet, correct?
It's good.
Mr. Chair?
Right. I have not.
I probably messed you up by flipping the order. I apologize.
And we will pause now to see if there's anybody online who would like to comment.
If you are on Zoom and you would like to comment?
We are closing the public forum at this point.
And then I have one.
Commissioner Rome?
Yes. If you could look at the recommended motions.
Yes.
I'm a little uncomfortable with the specificity because it just says, "I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance." Shouldn't it, could we amend that so it says something, "I move to recommend approval of case number ZOA 2103 of the proposed ordinance"? Is that typically what you do or not?
No.
That we would include that case number?
I mean, either way, we'll sort of convey the point. What we typically do is, "I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance," and then we include the title of the ordinance. So that's what language comes after the word ordinance. We always just sort of swap that.
Okay.
Ordinance title.
And is that, and that's in the packet, correct?
The ordinance title.
Yeah.
Yep. So it's on the cover sheet of the staff report and the top of the ordinance itself. We try to make sure those are consistent.
Okay.
That's specific enough?
Okay, yes, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Rome. Commissioner Antol?
No questions for me.
Commissioner Krichyver?
Thank you, just a few things. I'm just curious, who are the third parties that we are able to purchase this data from?
Uh, you know, I...
I was surprised with that.
What's that?
I was a little surprised by that.
Yeah, I can't remember the name, but it's essentially the same entity that, you know, when you get, like, coupons in the mail, any direct mail agency, the same kind of company that, like, buys the data for the, make sure the transcript gets mailed to everybody. So we explored this option, actually, like, a year ago when we started the Let's Talk program because we were, that's when it was like, we realized the deficiencies in the public data. And for the Let's Talk program, we ended up contracting with the transcript to send, print and send our postcards because it was a little bit cheaper. But at that time, we had explored a few different data sources that keep those units. You know, all of those addresses are available, like, you know, provided to the census. They exist. We provide those addresses to the census every 10 years, but we don't have them mapped in our public record GIS, so.
So is it just a function of neither the city of Wheat Ridge nor Jefferson County just compiles that information?
Correct. Yep.
It says in the packet, "The staff is proposing to purchase the data periodically." Is there any idea of how periodically, or is there anything that would dictate that? Or would that require another ordinance change or sort of?
Yeah. That's a good question. So it wouldn't require an ordinance change. Right now, we get data. Right now, we get data from the county theoretically once a quarter. That data is important because it reflects changes in ownership, so new names. This data is a little bit different, because we could get it periodically. The only reason that this data would change is if we have a surge in new units coming online. And we do have a sense of that pace, because we sign the certificates of occupancy every time a new unit is completed. So I think from a cost standpoint, what we'll try to do is sort of, every quarter, sort of search how many new units came on, do we need to buy new data? Every time, for example, a new apartment building would come on, we'd absolutely buy new data. But we can, we'll be able to gauge that, because we know how many new units have come to the market.
Okay. And so I guess sort of underneath my question then, basically how periodically it happens would just be up to the discretion of staff, there's nothing that we would need to do or City Council would need to do to set that?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so it's about $500 each time we purchase it, the 2,000 assumes we do it quarterly at the same sort of time that the county provides the updated data, though it may end up being less often if we know there were no new COs in the previous three months.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then kind of similarly, my last sort of topic, a couple lines down, it talks about how we're sort of going to examine the cost of the mailings and potentially pass that cost on to the land use applicants...
Yeah.
...by charging them based on the volume of the mailing as opposed to the flat fee. Similarly, would that be something that would just be at the discretion of staff, or would that have to go through some process?
Yeah, that's a great question. So every year, as a part of the 2022 budget, the City Council also reviews any change to the fee schedule. So that's like the pass to go to the rec center, application fee for zone change, and the mailing fee. What we've done this year is just increase the flat rate, I believe it went from like 120 to 150, and we're going to try to do a little bit of analysis over the next year and see if we're in the ballpark, if the average approach is going to make sense, or if we need to change that. And if we need to change it, it would likely happen on the budget cycle, but if it had to happen outside of the budget cycle for that far off, we would go to council with a resolution to update the city's fee schedule.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Krichafer. And I would like to, I appreciate in your staff report distinguishing the, between owners, occupants, and the sort of rights and the different classifications, development rights, objection rights, and right to information. And what we're talking about here is limited to right of information. So if you live somewhere and there's a zoning change or some sort of a land use change, you will have access to that information. You will be notified that something is going, a hearing or neighborhood meeting is going to happen. And that's the purpose of what we're talking about this evening. The process then becomes the issue. How do you put the information in front of the people that need to see it? And I appreciate the complexity of maintaining addresses, current addresses, particularly when we talk about rental properties and how rental properties, the occupants do tend to, tend to move, and new occupants come in, trying to keep track of that is difficult. I did just a quick poke around on Google and looked at what the postal service offers, and it seems to me that going directly to the post office, and with an account there, you can circle an area on a map, and they will cover every mailbox in that area. Prices are not very high, it seems fairly simple, rather than trying to maintain a database of names and addresses for renters and for owners and that sort of thing. And I understand with property owners and building owners, you do need the information for the people that don't live there. They need to be notified if they're living somewhere else that there's going to be a land use discussion coming up. But for everybody else, people that just need to know what's going on, it would seem that if you drew a circle on a map at the postal service and said we need to cover every mailbox in this, you would not have to maintain a database of people living in that area.
One would think, I wish it was that simple. So a couple of thoughts. What happens is we will pull the mailing address for the property owner and the occupant addresses. There will be some matches, so an owner-occupant will show up on both lists, so we have to clean, we essentially have to clean the data. We do that now for neighborhood meeting, because if we have the post office send to all the mailing addresses, we still have to send to all the owner addresses, which are not always the one and the same. So we'll end up paying for those doubles, right, where it's an owner-occupant. And the other challenge is the way that we're compelled to do the mailing is, it's not necessarily the building within the circle, it's any parcel that is touched by the circle. So sometimes we clip a corner, the house isn't in the circle, the house might not be within 600 feet, but if we clip the corner of that parcel, we include then the house that is outside 600 feet but whose underlying ground is within 600 feet. So it's just, it's slightly more complicated. I think, I haven't asked our city attorney if we can fully outsource legal notice, but I don't suspect we'd be comfortable doing that, because it is such a critical legal component of the public hearing process. There's not as much trust probably there in knowing that somebody else will know the nuances for that and get it right every time. We do a mailing, I mean, like, right now when we're seeing you every two weeks, we do a mailing every two weeks, basically, and more frequently for some of our administrative cases. So we have a good system down. And we do get, the city has an account with the post office, so we have a postage machine in the mailroom that has a different rate than like what you would get if you went to buy a forever stamp. But it's just slightly more complicated because of the need to send both to the owner and to the occupant, and to capture anything within the parcel.
I appreciate the explanation.
I appreciate the creative alternatives, because I'd love to outsource that.
Yeah, and the post office loves your business anyway.
They likely do.
If there are any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Kearns? Commissioner Lille? Commissioner Disney? Commissioner Ohm?
I just have one comment. I've done the, I've done the post, you know, sending out the letters and everything, and I can tell you, if I could have paid somebody $150, it would have been done. That is, it's very reasonable.
The post office?
Well, no, I'm not talking about the post office, I'm talking about the city...
Oh.
...of charging that fee for the, for doing that. And it would be a real time saver to the applicant. But some good questions tonight.
Very good. On this side, Commissioner Antol?
No more comments, first question?
Commissioner Krichafer?
No, thank you.
Okay. We will close our discussion and ask for a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning letter notice to property owners and occupants for land use applications as outlined in case number ZOA 2103.
Any other comments about the item tonight? We will call for a vote, Mr. Eaton.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, is there any old business?
No, I don't have any old business. Thank you.
It's my favorite part of the meeting. I'm kidding, thanks. Any new business?
Just a couple of updates. So dates, I think I shared this last time, we do expect to have both of the October dates on the 7th and the 21st. I will not be here on the 7th, but you will be in good hands. Ken Johnson will be here with our consultant team with the Lutheran Master Plan.
Oh.
And Scott Cutler will be here. Other updates, they're not development projects, but two sort of random things. You know Jordan Jeffries, he's our civil engineer, and he and his wife welcomed their first daughter today, this morning she was born.
Congratulations.
So he'll be out of pocket for a little while, you'll see probably other engineering staff supporting us. Stephanie will be back next month, so you haven't seen her in a little while. And then, in totally other news, the Wadsworth Construction Project, I did want to mention that, since we have the zone change on Wadsworth. You may have seen that City Council awarded that construction project at the end of August, so just a couple of weeks ago. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday, I believe, or the day before, with the contractor. And I would expect that you and the general public will start to see a lot more public information, and sort of timing, enclosures, and lots of information over the next couple of years as that project progresses. I don't know the details in terms of the groundbreaking and the start date, but they're actively working on that to try to, I think, have groundbreaking even maybe in October. So, at long last...
So is it safe to say we will start hearing about the groundbreaking and some of the other schedules within the next, say, month?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, if we have the groundbreaking date and more information on sort of where we can find continual construction updates, I'll make sure that comes to you on the 7th. Yeah.
That's great, appreciate that.
Are they going to make a presentation to the commission?
For the construction project?
Yeah, I mean, just like as a way of sharing information, or is that something one of the staff would do?
Yeah, that's a good question. We don't have that planned, but I can certainly try to include a more substantive update at one of our meetings.
It's such a big project, but it really impacts everything for cities.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question. There's a lot of the background information on what's up Wheat Ridge, so if you've been on there to look for the Let's Talk, you might have seen the Wadsworth Improvement tile. It includes a lot of the planning efforts and sort of the final design where we landed. It includes the construction set, so you can zoom in and see where the meetings will be and where the signals will be. What we typically do is we hire the contractor, and they get to decide sort of the minutia of sequencing. We have some ideas of what we thought it might look like, but certainly they're running the project, so we let them come up with those details, and that's what we're waiting for, to be able to do our, sort of our next phase of public information.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from the commission? We will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the September 16th meeting of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Disney, is there a second?
Second.
Call for a vote?
There we go. Motion carries, seven to zero.
Meeting is adjourned.